Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone into the chamber tonight. For sure, it's been three long, interesting months since we've been here, but welcome back. With that, I'd like to open up the June 15, 2020 council meeting order. Call it ordered at 7:00 p.m. All rise for the pleasure of leaving.
A pleasure leaving this city, the United States of America, and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have one. There's a note out front of you, is a town hall, it's busy by the weekend, that'll be in the form of this.
Any other changes or additions? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda with the one change with correspondence?
I'll move.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second's been made, you want to call the rolls, Kevin, please.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, mayor's report, oh, there are no presentations this time, so. One of the mayor's report. Most of you remember that we started to recognize the citizens of the month award last year. And it turned into involve the council after about six or eight months, which I thought was a really good thing because it involves not only myself, but the entire council, with the community. And we're going to go back to the month of March and Counselor Allen's duty for the month of March was to recognize the citizens, so at this time, I'll turn that over to Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Hobart, for sharing the honor of selecting citizen of the month. Brunnonia has many volunteers and giving people that deserve recognition and making, it makes choosing just one difficult at best. I want to choose someone that has given back to the community over the years without much fanfare. The person I selected moved to Brunnonia in 1986 and immediately embraced its values, history, and culture. I compiled a partial list of volunteerism and giving this person willingly participated in for the betterment of our community. Logged and helped transport a new Dewey Pool Peal log last year. Currently sits on the board for Crowns Elbowback Trail and made arrangements for the donated cat at Chapman Landing. Sponsors and/or participates in our annual friendship jamboree and logging show whenever he can. Helps set the large timbers on the Spencer Park Covered Shelter, provided the heavy equipment to do so. Provides use of private property near Christmas in Brunnonia. And in fact, last year, I believe he donated and set up a tree, so they'd have one there. Served as a member of Brunnonia Economic Development Committee. Served as a board member, West Oregon Electric Cooperation. Employees roughly 20 people in the logging industry and has been in business for the last 37 years. He is current board member on Camp 18 Memorial Museum. His company is featured in the first five seasons of X-Men and again in 2019, adding no derity to Brunnonia, not to mention a couple of local TV stars. Currently president of Timber Unity, 61,000 members fighting to give many working families a voice in Salem. The person I selected really does care about Brunnonia, logging, history, and citizens, and even donated a city building lot to one of our own after a tragic logging accident left him disheveled and in need of a new home to meet his needs. I recently had a chance to ask him what Brunnonia is to him. His answer was, quote, "Great community that cares about others," end quote. I also asked him if he had anything he would wanted to say, quote, "I'm proud to be a Brunnonian," end quote. Considering all this person has done for the greater good of our community and the city of Brunnonia, it is my privilege and honor to select Mike Peel as citizen of the month for March 2020.
Come on, get your award here, buddy. We don't give these out to just anybody.
I'm not sure if you're thinking of my brother or my dad right now, or...
You gotta turn around.
It's a great friend, Mike, or a good friend.
Congratulations, Mike, on behalf of the city of Brunnonia. I'd like to present you with the citizen of the month, the March award, and thank you for all you do for the community.
Thank you very much. Can you do this, or? We gotta get it.
Eric.
Hold your breath. Stop your yelling.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it. Well, we love Brunnonia.
You don't have to be held captive.
Yes.
Do you guys see that?
Let's put a lot of ice cream. Thank you, everybody.
The one pleasure in life now is ice cream.
That's right.
You deserve it, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. All right, thank you, everybody.
Had the pleasure to work with him last winter. He's a hard charger. Yeah. When I drove a log truck, I sat underneath the shovel, quite a few loads. Yeah, good guy. Okay, council committee meeting reports, there are none. Topics on the floor tonight?
None.
None, okay. Consent agenda for acceptance, none. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for June 1, 2020, city council work session meeting minutes for March 9, 2020.
Fairly explained to a lot of housewives, but my opinion is, the reason why the work session minutes are just now coming to you is because they were set for approval when the COVID broke out and then I grabbed one of the meeting minutes, the previous meeting that we were able to approve all of them, I just missed one. So, that's why I was reporting three months late.
It's okay. Anyone like to make a motion to accept these two? The one council meeting and the one workshop? I'll move to approve the consent agenda for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second's been made.
All right. Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Unfinished business, grandstand update.
Good afternoon, everybody. Stacy Pelster, if I may try to say something, please. All right, my turn, my die on me. So, update, we have a building permit. We have a contractor, Jim Morris, and it will be starting in a couple of weeks. We were set back when, so we had permission to start after April 15 due to the flood restrictions and the COVID epidemic pandemic pushed us back a bit. But the funding for the repairs and everything is there, and I know that I could be, and you can correct me as part of the committee, but repairs are going to start in just a couple of weeks now that we do have the permit and the materials. Not only that, some more materials were donated recently to add to the income donations to get the project underway and the repairs completed. Completion date according to the contract is November 2029. We're still on track for that. If we need a couple of months because of this push, lack, loss of time, we might request it. Right now, we're still on track and we think everything is going to go pretty smoothly. Then, just a clarification and correction from last month's meeting minutes, or the meeting minutes that we're in here, the condemnation clause is the one that you guys were talking about, 50% would go toward city and 50% to go toward the liability would go toward intercultural society. Well, that only takes place after occupancy has been given, issued. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that's not in place now, and even then, after that, the contract states that we're not liable unless the building is damaged, it can't be repaired at that point, and that also a correction or clarification, I'm not sure which. We do still, because of the lease, reserve the right to back out if we should choose, which would then at that point make any condemnation lease void, but we just all wanted to clarify that because we're a very tiny committee doing this and there isn't much backing us up, and so that made us nervous, and we just wanted to clarify that that's our option in the lease and that we're fully, I don't know, going forward, still with its repairs, which will put it in a so much better place, and whether we continue after the project or not, it's just another discussion. So, right now, I know that you guys, having done all that bloodwork to get donations and such to come forward, as well as the donations from such as the Lions Club, as well as other citizens to make this happen now, we're in a great place. Is there anything that you have other grandstands committee members who might be able to add that I missed, or is that a pretty good update? Okay. Yes.
I didn't hear the completion date.
Anticipated November.
November.
Yes. And it doesn't include, I don't believe that includes the roof, but it includes the major repairs in order to get occupancy.
And what others?
Major repairs mainly is the trust, and the trust is the one that's under scaffolding right now. Thank you.
Not the, oh, I have another man.
Go ahead.
So, the previous email stated that the fundraising committee had met their fundraising goal or more than, either probably the point that they met or more than that. What was that goal?
Our phase one goal, I believe, was 15,000 including in kind donations. There's about 9500 in monetary donations towards this so far, and I believe the rest is, and maybe more than that, so don't quote me on the numbers, but that's, I believe, where we're at.
So, are you the spokesman?
I was obviously designated as spokesman for tonight. It's because I'm with the Intercultural Society as well, so they asked if I might be able to step forward and just as a representative on the board meeting, on the board for the grandstands. Nicole takes my place when I'm not able to go to the meetings. We try to have at least one representative from the Intercultural Society participating in the grandstands committee, so we kind of...
Are you, are you on the grandstands committee?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I'm actually the marketing and promotions, the digital side helper with it in assist, and then we do a financial, Linda is the secretary, JR's president, we had another volunteer come in, I can't remember his name, who helped us with grant, looking at volunteering to find grants, and so we've had a number of volunteers come forward from the community.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, you're the president? So, you felt uncomfortable to speak to us last time? Have you managed to figure something out in that manner? We need a contact person, we need somebody that we can, that's going to be responsible to speak to us. I don't have a problem with you doing it.
Okay, because before, it seemed like there was, so we just stopped talking.
Well, I think we, we kind of clarified that issue, didn't we, Mr. Board?
I'm sorry? Yeah, so my recollection before was, and I'm an advocate here, obviously, was that the issue before council, the other counselors, was that there was potential confusion when counselors or the mayor were talking either as the public body or a member of the grandstand committee. So, as long as that, there's no ethics violations with it, but as long as that is clearly stated that you are speaking on behalf of the grandstand committee, not as a counselor or somebody speaking for the city, being a favorite of it, then I think that that would satisfy the concerns of council previously.
Please may.
Is that right? Did I explain how you guys recollect?
Yeah, and my recollection was that it wasn't an issue because it was clearly stated that Ruben, the attorney, had said that there was no conflict because there was no financial gain to be had, and so that they were free to talk at any time about it.
Yes, so it wasn't, if I recall correctly, it wasn't so much the concern was the ethics, potential ethics violations, but that the perception of the public might have been that the city is championing this cause, especially when certain members of the public body are active on, in public forums where they might be speaking as a public official and a volunteer of a separate entity.
That makes sense to me. Basically, they're allowed to speak, I would suggest, though, and we actually do have usually, for the most part, the group responding under the grandstands, a Facebook page on public comments when they post things, not under individuals' names, so that kind of helps to keep it clear on that dimension, but I get it, it's just like the day of you guys being on the airport committee or first committee and sharing information to your... Appreciate the clarification, because we were wondering the same thing, why they can't speak on our behalf and as their...
No, they totally can.
Yeah.
Previously, the water was muddy.
Yeah.
And now, moving forward, there shouldn't be any issues as long as you guys are all comfortable with it.
Well, they're great guys and they do a good job with this, so I'm happy that they are a part of this committee, you know, it seems like each of us have had our role in making different things go forward, and right now, this is their time, because we're past the business side of it for the most part, and they're doing great stuff, so, yeah.
We were awarded a grant too, so...
That, that's right, that's right.
So, I'd like to reclaim my time. So, are you comfortable with that?
How often you want to report?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I think when we were, so I may say something, when we were in discussions, I think we were talking quarters, every three months, if someone would come here and say...
Quarter, quarter.
I think that the next time we could even record it, when we're, we can update you guys on, unless they've done building, and so that would probably be a couple of months from now, and we'd be happy to come back and get another report, huh, so?
I kind of like the way it is, I mean, if we're going to have a quarterly report, then...
Well, it's not, I think...
Leave me with that, the way it is.
You mean like me coming in or...
Representative from the Intercultural Society. Oh, I do, but sometimes it's not been, we've been having some trouble.
Got you.
Getting, getting, you know, you're busy, you know, I understand that, I mean, you got a whole herd of kids, so... I just was looking for somebody that we knew, that we could go to, that, and usually the head of the organization is usually the person that, you know, is responsible ultimately.
And I can share that, when it comes to like giving more information, if you need it and we're not available for a report to it, one, either they can, or I can ask Linda to submit our last minutes with a little bit of information and an email to share to you guys, because at every meeting that we do have, which isn't that frequent, we haven't had anything happening in a little while, she keeps minutes, and so we have a record of what's going on, and so there's always the option that if you guys want more information, you can request it at any time. I think that just to keep it clean, we'll just plan on how to August 15 update, and that way, these two representatives don't have to be questioning at every meeting now, between now and then, we can have more. That make sense?
Yeah.
So, drop it on, say it's me or someone else. August 15. Well, and it could just be a printed update too, August 17? Oh, yeah, I just went, yeah. Yeah, well, make sure we have something. Okay, I think then, by then, we may actually have some more information for that.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Staff report, proposed sign for fishing dock.
Okay, so that's for me, and the sign that most of the docks come up with to stay away from it being like a total outright, you can't see here, is a sign, a sign that's connected there on the page. So, it would be in the blue and white, so it does follow kind of the ADA signage, but it does not have conviction of anyone in a wheelchair, because there are multiple limited mobility limitations. So, if you guys are okay with that, then we'll just work with that.
Council. When I read this, I think that the docks are only reserved for people with limited mobility. If I were walking upon that, I would, I would have to walk by, because it's like a reserved parking spot, it's only reserved for that individual or that group. So, I don't think that was our intent. Our intent is, the sign I think, Al, I don't know if the verbiage is right, it's just give way to persons with limited mobility. You know, it's instructional that people should give way to anybody that has limited mobility. I don't, I know I did a Google search and that was for verbiage, that was the very first thing that popped up, but I don't know if that's our...
I couldn't find any others unless they restricted and said handicap only.
Yeah.
Or the symbol and only on, like I went through all these different dock manufacturers and what they put on there for the random version, and that was only, something to this effect or something, so you guys can have a say whatever you want.
North Fort Caffrey, issue, no.
You've seen one?
Well, I also agreed with what Counselor Webb said when I read it, kind of struck me the same way. You can have a sign of any degree you want, whatever you want to put on it.
Yeah.
I have them made all the time. I did Google something and I found one, it was red at the top, red and white, it said, "Attention, please allow disabled persons priority to dock access to promote social distancing and overcrowding." So, I think that kind of leads to what Counselor Webb was saying, is maybe it's instead of this only for disabled or mobility people, that maybe it's give way to them, I don't know, I don't know how much money you want to spend on something. So, down at the North Fort Caffrey, they have the...
The dock.
The dock?
Yeah.
But I think it's open to anybody.
Yes.
But you have, what, do you remember the sign that says there? Not exact verbiage, but it's like, you must give way to disabled people for, if they show up, I think. Basically, you have to be disabled to fish there, but I think it's something about wheelchair people taking priority, but I'd have to go back, it's been a long time, so...
I thought that one that you were just talking about in the red pretty much covered it. That sounded pretty good.
But are we leaving the social distancing thing or just take the top, from what you said?
Well, this was red on top with white letters, and it had a little red stripe kind of around it, so it's basically a white sign with some red, it was on the internet, it just popped up, and I think I took out the one or two words out of that, but it's just attention at the top, please allow disabled persons priority to dock access to promote social distancing and overcrowding. That's all the same.
So, will we just take off the promote social distancing and overcrowding and just say attention, please allow?
Oh, if you want this for forever.
Well, we're buying like a metal sign that's going to be mounted, so I was thinking for it.
Oh, I thought we were talking about the COVID stuff, so that's what...
Oh, well, we may have been, I thought we were just talking about notifying the public that like some, a whole bunch of people, a lot of people can't, can't handle the dock and that no one of the disabilities can get off.
Oh, yeah, it fell under the, the conversation was about the distancing and everything, opening the docks up so I could see, since we're...
I like the language, I think we do leave off the social distancing, that can be a little sort of sign, because that's not going to be forever, we hope, and the intent, it's my understanding of the docks, was that they were supposed to be primarily for access for disabled persons to be able to fish. So, I think that having the sign not reserved for persons with limited mobility, but something similar to the language Counselor Allen came up with would be great, and then we've got subset of please continue to practice social, or physical distancing.
Can you, could you read more of that, attention, not the social distancing, just whatever?
Please allow disabled persons priority to dock access. And you guys want to leave off to promote social distancing and overcrowding?
Yeah.
Because that's a given, right? Is all of council okay with red?
Yeah.
Question? Would it be better to have it in the blue and white?
It probably would be if it's going to be long term.
To match the, okay.
Thank you, John.
Disabled, is that the correct word there? I would remember, I went through, there was a list of no's.
Well, that would change potentially at some point anyway, because things do, so maybe limited mobility.
But it does, you know, like my father-in-law, he's pretty much blind, so he still won't be old, kind of, but, but being blind, you know, it has a disability, so I would think disability, as long as that's not a bad word.
You could say, attention, please allow persons with limited mobility priority to dock access. Or disabled, either.
Disabled. I, I think that that's not a question I can answer. I think that there, like, contact the seniorism disability, talk to the Miam.
Okay.
And confirm what words we are allowed to use.
Okay.
Chief. I don't think it has, because if it can happen, it will. Yes. Well, we're being expected, unfortunately, because I can see somebody calling going, you guys have a sign, this person won't get off the dock. Does this need to be a part of rule change? Does any order needs established? Or is it just a courtesy sign?
We could easily amend the part rules to include it as a rule, and then if they break the rule of the part, they can be asked to leave.
Because, you know, my question is, isn't it O D F and Ws, wasn't it the intent that it was supposed to be like this? So, I think that it should be in the rules.
Okay.
But that's my personal...
A version of the rules, the un-rules?
Do I have to have that be...
Good point, Chief.
Thank you.
Do we get people to roll around there and use them?
Even the part, that is what you're...
The docks, I'm asking Counselor, what if he's doing them all night?
Do you see people in wheelchairs?
Wheelchairs? Let me see.
Or some matches or whatever?
I have to go outside and walk them, yeah. You would take most people with you.
Have to go outside and walk them.
Yeah, you would, but maybe the sign is needed, I don't know. If people want to ask, they won't, sometimes they want to issue you on their own.
Okay, looping on, new business.
There's a motion to approve the sign as amended and for staff to bring forward the rules for amending.
So, loop.
Got a new word in that?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconds for main.
All right. Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor McNair, absent. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. New business, staff report, council work sessions, page 10.
Okay, this one's from me. You have requested a list of work sessions for staff to bring forward. On here, you'll see city municipal violation form, potential...
On here, you'll see city administrator violation or potential changes. That was something that was mentioned at the last meeting. Do you guess if you want to skip a lot or when you want to do that? I also heard from a few counselors that you wanted to have a work session about council rules. Uh, roles of counselors.
Never heard that.
And, uh, really, like, anybody disagree with that or want to speak to it?
So at the meeting in May, there was discussion about things that had occurred. And one of the things that we talked about at that meeting was wanting to hold a, I had expressed that I think it was very important that we held, that we had discussion. It was supposed to be, I thought, at the next meeting, which it was not, about what our roles and responsibilities are and what we should and should not be doing as reminders, apparently, because, you know, things change. And, um, that was something I had thought of. And I do believe it's also something we had talked about and never fully, fully developed a discussion on at prior workshops. And I believe it was supposed to be carried forward also.
And then, also, you guys, I think there might have been a misunderstanding about the U G B work sessions. I spoke to Matt about that and he has enough information for you guys to move forward. He has, you know, some questions that you guys have asked and he'll have those answers. It will be coming to you guys at a regular council meeting because you guys will be making a decision, directing him to move forward on one of your guys' tracks. So it doesn't need to be necessarily to our work session. He has enough information from you guys to start moving forward a little bit. So I wanted to kind of clarify that for you guys. It's not, that will not be the last time you guys are going to talk about it. It's basically your guys' decision for staff to proceed. And then he'll go down the path of the state laws and et cetera, how to do that. We'll come back to you guys at other meetings and public hearings and planning. So that's just, that's the kickoff, rather than continuing to just hash it out with different ideas. So he has enough info from you guys as long as you guys are, I think I'm getting faces that are comfortable with it.
So the questionnaire, we would have that information back at the same time, because I think that was pertinent.
Yes, so.
The questionnaire to the boot and the bottom.
Yes, so he'll have the replies to the questionnaires of whether or not they would want to annex. But at the last work session that you guys had, you guys had made, you had reached an agreement, you didn't make a motion because you can't do that at a work session, that you guys wanted to move forward with removing the timber property and the store property and for staff to find out if they can bring in the boot and remove the bottom into the U G B. So those are the big questions, and you guys have answered that for staff to move forward. He was going to find out about that creating islands or not. But that has to be annexed, so that's not the first step. That'd be the second or third step of the process. It's not a one big thing, it's many small things.
So we got to rip off the amending state, go this direction?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess is what.
But it's, some of them are interrelated and it's like, do you start initiated, do you end up, if you can't make the island by getting the annexation across the top of the boot, you know, it's those type of questions.
Yeah, so he'll have those answers at the meeting where you guys will make that decision. But you guys will have to make that decision one way or the other, or the other, or the other way. But you guys have to make a decision on it at some point. So this is a good time for staff to start building their staff reports and whatever he all has to do, so.
Go ahead. I was going to make a comment. I'd like to, uh, talk about our council rules and what has evolved in the last maybe couple weeks. And during this time out of chambers and on teleconferencing, there's a lot of things that we were not able to finish. And at our last meeting at the scout cabin, we talked about council rules. And so I really started to read them again and got into, I mean, our little, I don't know. And one of the most important ones that I found was number 10, where when we make an agenda, the city administrator works in conjunction with the mayor. And so I took that to heart. So about three weeks ago, I came to the city administrator and I said, "Josette, what's a good time to meet before the agenda comes out on Wednesdays?" And she said, "How about Monday morning, 10 o'clock?" So we set up our appointment and I bet, came in, excuse me, last week, or last Monday, 10:00 a.m. And we came over here first and figured out how we could make this work and went back in her office and started talking about things that we haven't finished and want to get done. And talked a lot about building relationships and how we could better serve the community and everyone kind of, so, you know, that's what we're going to do. And when we talked about new business, we talked about these workshop sessions that we haven't finished, that are river out, urban growth boundary one, for example. And so that's where we're at. And Counselor Wagner, maybe we could add that to the workshop if council decides to, that if they think it's important to go over those roles again, we could sure do that. But I think this will help us move forward with some of the things, these things. And so that's where we're at with these two items specifically. The city administrator review, which takes place in July. We need to set a date, we'd like to be setting a date for that workshop. And, uh, and then Stephanie just informed us about the urban growth workshop. So that's where that came from. So I, anybody having any discussion on that or council?
Did we finish the water discussion outside City Limits? Do we ever, it seemed like we were in the middle of that also.
It's coming back to you.
Sorry, I must have spoken about it just before you got here. I actually am in the process of drafting that resolution. At the, actually, your man's right here. The March 9 work session is where you guys decided what you wanted to do with it. I'm currently drafting that resolution and it is on schedule for July 6.
And I also wanted to speak on the U G B. Josette mentioned ripping the Band-Aid off, but the way I remember it was, Matt Straits' answers kept changing every time we talked to him. So it was pretty hard to kind of go in a direction when we didn't know what the rule is or how, you know. So that target kind of kept moving as far as, as far as in my mind, what we could do and how it worked.
So.
Each time he had a different answer, talked to a different person, so.
So in response to the different answers, at every work session, there was slightly different questions asked, or questions asked. So this is where, just moving forward, this is where, when you guys have these scenarios or certain questions you want to ask, sending that to staff, especially on something that's going to need to be researched, so that they can find those answers before the meeting and then are put on the stand, asked kind of the same question, but it's a little bit different. So it's not written down in the legislature's rule books and then you have to call somebody to find out that answer. That's where it kind of becomes difficult for, you know, anybody to have answers to those.
You're speaking specifically for a planner?
Especially for a planner, because they're looking at huge rule books.
You don't call, you don't call them on any general question. It's just this particular thing that is your state law, state.
Well, even me, if you guys have a question about something in Robert's rules, I mean, it looks this big. If you have some scenario that you want to ask how this would work, I might not have that answer. So if you have questions like that, especially with a planner, I mean, they have, they have to read the state's laws and then if they don't understand it, they need to call one of their constituents and hopefully get an answer. If that person doesn't have an answer, they have to call somebody else. So that's where I think there was some of that confusion is because, I mean, when I was there, I heard that question before, but it was kind of different. And so while I remember the answer to the first question, or obviously somebody else probably here did, it was different. So does that answer still apply?
Well, I think that in respect to the question, getting back to the type of question you asked, I think he was refining it in the sense that he was getting clarification. And he spoke about that, the first time he spoke about it, he said, "I have talked to this guy and sometimes I'm not getting the same answer out of that other guy." So I kind of took it when he said that, that there might be, uh, some clarification coming down the road, we might see a change in that answer. So I wasn't really surprised by that. Maybe I read something into it that you didn't see there or something, I don't know.
No, I just thought he was coming back with some answers and going to come back with us one more time now and here. Going to come back, he's just going to send an email answer or whatever?
No, 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 sorry. He goes, so when the meeting that he comes to, where he's asking you guys to make a decision, he will have the answers to the questions you guys have asked. It will be in this setting where all of you guys get to hear it and you all jointly make a decision of, well, this is the answer to the donut question. We want to go that way because we legally can't. Or we can't go that way, so obviously we're not going to, we're going to go this way. So what's, staff doesn't want you guys to have to talk about it again. Staff wants you to talk about it again. But they want you to do it in a setting where you guys are going to make a decision so that we don't meet and then in two weeks, so we're going to meet in four weeks because that's when everybody can get together. And then it's a work session, so then we have to come back in two weeks for you guys to make a decision. Or is that an ordinance and then it has to come back in three weeks? So it's not that we're not wanting you guys to talk about it. You guys are going to be able to talk about it. But what we want you to do is do it in a setting where you guys can make the actual decision. Or if you guys are just genuinely not comfortable for it, comfortable with it, don't, table it and have a work session.
Yeah, we'll have it in the packet prior, four days prior to the meeting, so.
Or it'll be longer than that, because staff's coming forward for you guys to make a decision to move forward one way or the other. So it'll be earlier than that. But if you guys decide not to because you guys aren't satisfied with the information or the direction that staff's able to legally take you in, then don't make the decision. Table it and have a work session. Or if you guys just start ready for it now, you can still have a work session.
No, I think it's starting to firm up enough the way that's going on. If that can move and make a decision on it. Everybody okay with that, waiting to? Okay. So, go ahead, Ben. I want to talk.
Other workshop, I came up in the budget, was the reserve fund discussion. We wanted to have a workshop.
About land policy?
Yeah, kind of a policy around reserves, just how we're going to deal with that in going into the future. The amounts and total amounts and are we doing a percentage or are we just doing? One other one that I'll bring up now, that might be more applicable to you a little bit later, but I think we need to have a workshop around the rate review process on our rates and any possible parameters. So when do we hold the rate reviews? You know, do we want trigger mechanisms or?
Can you say rate reviews?
The, our sewer and water rate review process that we have.
Right.
And this year, we didn't have.
Right, because you built the calculator that basically does what the past committees wanted.
Right, but when, when do we trigger that rate review? If the numbers are exactly the same, yeah, I agree, there's no sense in having a rate review. That would be one of our parameters. But say the consumption rate changes by a nickel. Is that something we want to trigger in to have the rate review review that? Or the base rates changing or do you just want to go, do you want, I mean, there, yeah. Do you want to go strictly by the numbers?
Well, so I would think it's a little bit too different of things. I think we're out of the rate review as it was in the past. Because I don't think, I think the community can legitimately know by even doing the calculator, which is accessible on the website, that how their rate is being structured. If what you're talking about is that council wants to see that preliminary data and make some sort of determination on that ahead of the budget, then let's do that. But to have the rate review where it's two public works committee members and two counselors and all of staff taking their time over a nickel, I'd rather have you five decide the nickel. Because the rest of it's legit, right? And you're going to already put a policy about reserves, so that percentage is going to be, there's less and less for the public at large through those committee members to tweak than there was three years ago, if that makes sense. Because we're slowly walking down those portions of the calculator by council policy, by decision. So it almost makes more sense for, what you're looking for is for council to see that information ahead of the budget being drafted, that would make sense. But to pull in public works, it hasn't been part of it since the calculator became a calculator and then say, "Oh, well, this is the reserve, but you can't touch that because there's a council policy, it's got to be that." Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, let's see, the process we went through last, not this year, but last year, we realized having that rate review with that preliminary in front of the budget was not a good thing. We all agreed that, because when we go into budget and we change that budget number, then we got to bring that back into the calculator and spit out the new numbers.
Sure.
And, and I noticed staff this year said, "Well, we're not going to have a rate review. We're just going to maintain the same rates." But the calculator isn't spitting out the same rates. It's different numbers. There are some of them, some of them, this is my point, some of them are two cents off. One's 11 cents off. One of them's over about, is about 59 off. So at what point, I mean, I think that's a rate review process.
Do you want the public works committee members in the weeds about that or would you as council like to decide that? So that's my question. Because I think it's almost now that it's so miniscule and there's not much, really. I mean, if we have a project coming in the budget, the rate's going up. That's just to give them that the project needs funding, right? So that's something you guys as the five of you as half of the budget committee will see and be presented within the budget. I wonder, I'm trying to pull from you, where is, what's missing? Who needs to talk about it?
Counselor Webb, can I interrupt? Since you're, it's your turn. So how was the decision made this year?
The, how was the decision for what?
The, that we didn't do a rate review, have that slapped in?
Well, we talked about it, when we came up with the calculator, that there wasn't a ton. The budget drives the rate anyway.
When you said we.
The committee that was there, because the philosophies were set, right? When we did the different parts of the calculator, those were the philosophies encapsulated in this goes in and this is this and this, right? So that's what the rate review committee did over three years, was kind of build that philosophy and not, and to try and keep it stable and not have it.
philosophy and not, and try and keep it stable and not have it do this up and down. I mean, you can have a rate review committee, but the chances, the risk there is that you go back in and start rehashing that philosophy. You can do that. It just seems kind of backwards to go over it again.
Well...
Because it's not the same philosophy you stood today.
I guess my concern is that we were, the committee was meeting a year.
Right.
From the time that we adopted this system. And not to argue your points on that you're at this moment in time that I agree, I don't. What I'm trying to say is, when did we make the decision not to meet that here or bring it in front of the council and make us aware?
Make what decision? The budget drives the rate. So when you guys as half of the budget committee approve this project, this project and this project are being paid out out of water and sewer, those are the numbers that then go into the rate calculator and spit out a rate. There's no decision making to happen after that unless you guys want to, after you've already through the budget, rehash it and start changing how you're charging it. It seems like, I don't know what we're missing, that's why I'm wondering what's missing.
What I see is missing was a decision was made to not change the rates. We didn't actually follow through and take the final budget numbers and put them in the calculator and spit out the new rates. I could see definitely a staff argument is, it's only two cents difference, I'm not going to go in and change for two cents. But, you know, when it gets to be a nickel on a consumption item, it's three grand or so, you know, I mean, that's the policy.
Right, but that miniscule of the thing, and you talked to Ben, is addressed in the rounding up of the different numbers. I wish you would have told me you wanted to talk about this because I can't speak to it as well as Ben can, but in the rounding up of numbers, you cover that teeny up and down with what you're collecting, so.
Which we've kind of preliminary got a rule to round up to the nurse's next body probably should.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to put it on there as a work session. Council can have a work session and we can bring that and show you what's happening with all of that and then determine it afterwards.
JR, did you have something?
Josette, when you said the budget drives the rate, now last year we talked about lining a bunch of the stormwater up on the ham. I believe the number was $60,000 was put in for that. That work did not happen, so does that money float to the next year or do we subtract it for this year? Or if that work doesn't happen, then you stated that you were going to go for a grant. What happened to that $60,000? Did it get reappropriated?
No, it just stays where it is and holds into the next year as cash carry forward.
So then there'd be potential to lower the rate then since you didn't do the work that the people are paying for for that particular year?
There isn't a potential to lower it because the rate this year is based on the cash carry forward and the current budget, so it adjusts itself. That money didn't get spent and it isn't getting redelegated to the project. It went into cash carry forward and then the projects are here and if it doesn't get spent in the project, then in the calculator, it's self-adjusting. So you put in all the numbers and it doesn't let me hold $60,000 over here. Every number goes into that calculator. Maybe that's a good reason to have a work session is to show you guys what exactly that does.
I saw Bruce first, go ahead.
Mayor, I think that we probably should address this and questions forwarded to the city administrator so that she has the opportunity to research and do the background work and bring her stuff so that she, you know, I'm not going to say that anybody's got you, but I think it's, you made that point. I think that's a fair point.
I think we can just have a work session and.
This is not going to, it's a whole different work session, you mean?
Yeah.
I was going to say that exact thing, that this is a request for a work session, not a discussion.
Yeah. I'm not trying to, I just.
No, that was all I intended, a work session.
Because we had talked about this, but I thought you spoke.
It's a little too late or anything. I can't say now, we're going to adopt a budget and we're going to adopt those rates tonight.
Well, you could always do it, we could do that one ahead of your reserves so that when you put a policy in place, if there is a policy to come out of that, you could include it with your policy discussion about reserves. So hey, this is the calculator, this is what it does, this is how we, why we did or didn't. And then the next one, the next one be the reserves and if there's a policy you'd like to set for that. Does that work? But it needs to be ahead of reserves, got it?
Okay, we're going to move back up, excuse me, to the city administrator evaluation workshop. And July is just right around the corner. There was some discussion on maybe doing it a little differently, but I think we can go ahead and choose a date tonight where we could set up the workshop for that process and then we could talk about that during that workshop, I think would be the best.
I agree with that. I never intended to, you know, hamstring the process, I just, and I knew that it was coming up, so. Did you guys, when I was outside, did you discuss that article that was forwarded to us?
No.
On email?
Nope.
What was your impression of it? Because that's probably this, the whole.
Well, I, okay, go ahead.
Again, this item on the agenda is to be setting these, not having discussions.
No, but in relation to what I'm saying here is worthy of setting a workshop on it. That's what I meant by that. I was trying to gain some sort of understanding whether I'm the lone person that seeks that or if there's a consensus to do that.
JR, my recollection at the scout cabinet is that we discussed the time crunch and there just wasn't time to start changing things this year, but we had agreed to look at it and definitely probably implement something for the following year. It was a misunderstanding on?
No, 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 I just, this is a setting a workshop and I think it would fall under that.
A workshop.
It also said slash potential changes, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
Well, and I think it's in relationship to the form is what.
Yeah.
Whether or not you want to do that one that's got a thing and a huge blank or you want, I was, Rick and I talked about, I was going to present using the type that Chief Mayor Matt was using, which is way simpler and it's tallying and like description and you could look at that and see if that's what you want to use.
Yeah, and that's way different from what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is a totally different.
Right.
So I think we can go ahead and set up a workshop.
For the form? Or just for my evaluation?
Free evaluation. Once we get into that, then we could decide.
Well, real quick, so your evaluation process starts on the first meeting in July.
Okay.
I just review all of the forms and then the fourth Monday in July is your guys' first executive session, unless you ask for a speaking session, for you guys to start the process. So unless you guys want to saddle yourselves with a bunch of meetings, consider that. So you either have one to discuss the form ahead of July 6th or you do, and then just go with what you got and then we can have a discussion on the form. Form, I mean.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Just to speak to that, just so that somewhere in the, if it happens in September, if it happens in October, I'm fine with that. I just don't want it happening in May of next year.
Oh.
You know, and, well, doesn't matter, I might not be here, so. But that's my understanding.
Yes. When Josette and I had this discussion and she showed me the form chief and her use on a quarterly schedule, it, the question, or Josette had told me that once we got together during the evaluation, we could decide to do a different form.
Well, no.
I think that's what you said.
Well, I mean, you guys would have to decide whether you're going to do that form ahead of my evaluation.
Oh.
Because I'm not typically there when you're.
So we would need another meeting.
So, yeah, so on the side, which would be different than a work session, but it would be a quarterly executive session, but the mayor and I did talk about doing a quarterly executive session where I sit with council. We do that quick quarterly review. We bring up issues that are hot on the plate so that you're not holding on to it. So six months later, when it's my evaluation, you're going, in January, you did this wrong and I didn't like this and I didn't like this because it doesn't help you because you're frustrated for a year, it doesn't help me because I moved forward in the process and not connected to that thing that you would have liked done differently three months ago. And really talking about whether or not a quarterly kind of update for me and then an update to you guys, maybe it's an executive session with an open session after it to discuss projects and stuff, that that happens. That will keep it from being such a monstrous, overwhelming task for you guys because you're trying to think of every little thing over the last year you liked or didn't like. So that's what we did discuss.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, so I think most of us would agree, the process last year was cumbersome and awkward. And I would propose we have a workshop before the July meeting to hash out whether we'd want to go down this route of the more abbreviated administrator review process for the time being until we have our workshop on to the other process. But I just want to let some councils in, but if they want to do something like that, then take a look and decide.
Councilor, the only thing that I would make certain is that at the end of every one of those reviews, we determine a remuneration, or pay. So we don't, whatever we do, we can't allow that to get.
Lost.
Lost, yeah. It has to be part of the process because that's always at the end of it, we sit down and decide, you know, so. If we're going to do anything, I'm fine, I don't want anything that changes that process because it's, it's that way every time they.
Yeah, it was that way when I was.
Yeah, it's just.
No, we're too ready to change.
Process.
I would agree with you, Councilor. I did read the email and read the letter about the review process. I had a discussion with Josette and I looked at the form that they use and I, I too would like a, I would recommend a workshop prior to July 1st. I think it could improve our process here.
We've got two weeks.
Yeah.
You want to do next Monday? In case you guys aren't then? If they, they're either going to choose to stick with the one they have because they have more questions than not on the other one or they like it.
So you give us the forms in here for your quarterly?
Yeah, kind of, kind of show you how we do it and then, and basically it's malleable, right? So it's different categories and different positives. It's outstanding, it needs work category, right? And if it's a five or a one, you put some comment in there. It's not these paragraphs versions where everyone feels obligated, but fill in this huge.
And I'm wondering if we would even have enough time, if we use two hours. I mean, it seemed to be pretty straightforward. It's a similar process, grading and such. We can also bring up, just going to what Bruce's idea that Legal Oregon Cities puts out of just moving to that format. It's more of a forward-looking process instead of looking behind and complaining. But it also, it sets expectations, which is part of that equation, which I think a lot of us would like to see. So, you know, yeah, I would put the caveat, we look at the simplified orderly.
I'm not very experienced yet.
Do a quick review of the other and make a decision, by the captain, decision, a workshop, a couple of sentences.
Yeah.
And so.
We've got two weeks.
Two.
Well, next Monday.
Next Monday?
Monday.
Monday?
And six?
Six, yeah.
Six to eight?
Six to eight, yeah.
So in relation to that, and it doesn't need to be now, but.
Yeah.
In relation to that, you're saying expectations, that's another thing the mayor and I talked about needing a work session is like a council priority and not set the expectations because what's happening right now is there's five cars that I'm chasing and if this car's project doesn't get done, then they're asking me, why isn't my project done? And so a more streamlined priority that the five that you were asking of staff, which that would set expectation. Because right now it's all over the place and it's depending on who comes in and kind of says it or calls or rises to the top. Does that make sense? It's not a very easy way to work.
And the example they were giving in the Legal Oregon Cities article was, we're going to do a timber project somewhere and in conference review, it's agreed upon to be completed by November. You know, everybody is agreeable, that's, and it does kind of sets an expectation and we're all on the same page. I like that format.
Yeah.
So.
And then it kind of makes you guys agree that that's a priority. Because sometimes it's, you, the five of you have very periodic.
Well, that's where the give and take would be. We write, like you say, we've got a big list of all these different things and then when we get into them and you go, well, I can do this project by November, and then we start piling 10 more things on there and you go, well. But those are going to be further out where the council says, no, this is probably more priority than that, then you'd be expecting to push that one back.
Right.
So.
Let that be good.
Hold that thought for next Monday night.
Got it.
Is that going to be part of it?
No, it'd be another work session. That's where you just want to set a council priorities work session. Yeah. Because it's really going to be dependent on if you go that way, you're going to do with priority work sessions and then drive that, right? Yeah.
Well, even if we don't, we're still, that's still a worthy goal to do that.
Right.
So, should we set a date for that? Get something firmed up? Isn't that what this whole point of this is? Is to kind of get?
Yeah, that's what, well, it was on the agenda tonight. So we've already set a workshop for next Monday at 6:00 PM. And then we want a workshop.
Well, the only concerning thing I think is if you do the form, whatever you're going to do, then you have like executive sessions and workshops that are specific to the eval for the month of July and potentially some of August.
Yeah.
So priorities really needs to be. The first, yes, so the first, first executive session is the fourth Monday of July. Yeah. So you're kind of already busy in those months unless you are comfortable in how you want them, right?
Not only between the front meeting and executive session.
Council meetings.
Just the two council meetings. Yeah, it is getting false.
Well, it appears that we've got the evaluation and this possible workshop on that. So maybe July is the fourth month.
Yeah.
So at the end of that, maybe we should sit down and determine where we go next.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that is a.
That's the next workshop.
And then the second meeting in July is going to be back to this and that's the schedule of the next ones.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, okay. I heard you guys wanted to set your. I heard you guys wanted to set your work sessions after you go with the evaluation process because you don't know how many meetings you're going to need for your evaluation process. Is that what you heard from you, Bruce?
That's kind of what I was thinking that...
Do you want it to be the first meeting in August?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you guys...
But that's okay with everybody else.
You'll know what that means if you guys are going to have a bunch more executive sessions or not.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. No business from the departments tonight. Ordances, Resolutions. Resolution 2020-07. A resolution providing for adoption of a new and revised master fee schedule and rescinding resolution 14-08.
Okay. I brought you guys this resolution, and then I also sent you guys the amended resolution. The amended resolution adds, it adds the number two under, now therefore, that way. And in any ordinances or resolutions where 1408 is mentioned, it will automatically revert to this new master fee schedule. Staff has been working on creating this new document. It's just much more user-friendly, it's clearer, it's... Way better. I actually, I brought a highlighted version for JR so I can tell you what I changed. It's off the learnings from the last meeting. Okay, so the fees that have changed are, under utility billing fees, the water loan repayment fee is $7.15. It was $9.50 before. The sewer loan repayment fee changed to $19.50. It was $22.80. I know I did...
Sewer...
And then... What? It was $20. And then under planning fees, I did some shifting on that one. So subdivision was on its own line before, when actually the fee for subdivisions was preliminary plot plan and final subdivision plans. So I just did, I didn't add any fees there. I just changed the language so it read better. And then major land partition, I changed that one because there was no fee. And it's $500 to be aligned with everything else in consultation with our city planner. And then commercial zone development, there was no fee there before. It's $500 to be aligned with everything else. We also add language at the beginning of planning fees noting that these are deposits so that if, and when, there are considerably more costs than is outlined in here, we can charge the customers that amount due to past learnings. Yeah, we ran it back. Yeah. So the language is straight to the point at the beginning, whereas on previous fee schedule, it was noted on the zone of fees, and that's really not how it should work. And then I also added under planning on the next page, page 15, building over lot lines permit. This is something that was adopted at least two years ago, and the fee was just never planned fee schedule. So that pays for planning costs. And then under police department fees, there was no fee in there for reports or fingerprints. There were fees that were being charged for that, but in order to put it in the master fee schedule, so we add something to our internal to point to when somebody asks why we're charging those fees, it's a net. And then one more, I almost forgot, went under parking, sorry, park fees, page 12. We changed the annual park pass to the annual park in pass. This is a change for reliability, language as requested by our insurer. So it's still the same, same fees, same, what's the word, implementation? Distribution of funds and everything. We just changed it to parking pass rather than park pass, or did use pass. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those as best I can.
Just a quick question. So item three says commencing July 1. Initially, the rates as set forth in attachment A. I'm presuming that that is a cyclical attachment, so it changes. And I know this is going to be picking, but is, do you have to say that? Because I would just be concerned that somebody looks at this and it says, okay, on July 1, attachment A was X, and that locks that in as that attachment A. So that you never have to, that you have to go through a new... I know the intention of what you're trying to do here. I just want to make sure that the language allows you to change attachment A.
Well, so moving forward, we're not changing attachment A. We're not amending this resolution ever. We're going to brand it one, brand it one every time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because since 2008, we've had the same master fee schedule being updated over and over and over and over again. It's been something that has been on my wish list since I started.
Okay.
And if we're going to, so attachment A will be connected to the resolution each time it's amended, and that'll be a different resolution number.
Got it. Can I have your page?
And it's either attachment or instead of standard location.
Who else had a question?
I did. As for the city administrator.
Are you on the third page?
Well, I'm not sure. I think maybe it's, I don't know if it's page 14 right there at the bottom or public. I'm not sure. Public Works Committee and our thoughts, we had concurrence that we were going to, you know, the gutter runoff issue, we were going to put the fees into the... Can you point those out to me?
Yeah, so you're talking about the special inspector type?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's what all of those things are going to be, that's what all of those would pay for. Currently, they pay for Matt or then someone currently, sorry. Or Andrew. Yeah, or Andrew. If it's like an engineering need, they pay for that. But that's, all of those permits would be under that special inspector.
Okay.
So if they pay $200 for a grading permit, someone, that special inspector would go out with that permit and go through it and make sure they're doing it correctly, and that's what would pay.
So the grading is part of that runoff equity?
Yeah.
So I'm trying to remember just what language we're getting.
And it kind of depends. If they're putting in a new driveway and that's going to create runoff, then that's correct. And new driveway permit, it just depends on what work they're doing.
Okay. I just want to make sure we had that in there.
It depends on some sort of movement up the land of their purpose of doing that caused...
Change.
Yeah.
So those, I think in the last, I don't know, I think the last piece, I guess it's, or is it list all your guiding values? Administrator fee 13, page 14. So those are like record requests, stuff like that, we recharge?
Yeah.
And is there not a waiver process of those fees for certain entities? Is everybody...
If it's for the betterment of the public, but it's usually just because somebody wants some information that's not... So like if it's a, a request from the media, more than likely, it's for public's benefit so that they can publish an article and have the facts. Whereas if it's just me and I'm mad about my neighbor and I want to request documents from their property files to see if they have a permit for something that's making me mad, you have to pay for that.
So who makes that determination?
I do. It's my job. I'm being serious.
I am too.
If there's any ever, ever any question, oftentimes, questions lead to documented or exempt from disclosure. I consult with the city attorney about it.
Right. So when somebody asks for a fingerprint, and you charge, is that $10 a finger or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's $5 per card, so it becomes...
So do you charge for the time that, who does it?
Generally, you, but I do.
So you don't have a, you don't have a rate or...
Think of it as standard cost of life, you do it.
It's just $10?
Yeah. For the time being, that's actually, I've posed a question to our insurance carrier, especially with COVID. We've discontinued taking fingerprints for the time being. We still do the old style, I need fingerprints, and there is no way to sanitize the process. And there's obviously no way to social distance either. The insurance, our insurance carrier has responded to my request again, but they are agreeing that there is no way to disinfect an ink pad. And are probably going to give me a recommendation either to discontinue the fingerprint practice altogether and/or figure out a way to do live scan or digital fingerprints.
Just so you know, there are single-use fingerprint pads.
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. Yes, there are single-use fingerprint...
Oh, pads, no. More...
Gee, how much is a digital fingerprint scanner? We use it to airport, so...
Depending on, what do you mean by fingerprint scanner? What?
Well, like when I go get security for clearance, I'll put my hand on there and I roll it until the computer says you got it.
Right. There's several different brands out there that have those, and they're, they range anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000. They're pretty expensive. There might be a couple of cheaper models out there. I haven't researched it a bunch. I know CIS has given some grants in the past for those because they kind of wanted away from the new ramps. I know the jails, the sheriff's office, they all provide fingerprint service. They all have live scans. Nothing that we've ever felt the need for in our budget because we probably do less than 10, 10 sets of fingerprints a year.
Yeah, what, under what circumstances would you do that?
Most of those are for fingerprint background checks.
Oh, I see.
DHS, stuff like that, or when they can't get appointments everywhere else, then they'll call you.
It's mostly a voluntary type.
We're not generally doing criminal fingerprints, so I'll go to the jail for them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion to, there's no more discussion to... Almost got this resolution.
I'll make that motion. We both accept resolution number 2020-07. A resolution providing for adoption of a new and revised master fee schedule and rescinding resolution 14-08.
Is there a second?
No, I'll second that.
And seconded?
Councilor McNair?
Aye.
Councilor Weber?
Aye.
Councilor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Holbar?
Aye.
Councilor Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you. We do have some correspondence tonight. I got, I didn't get an email. Yep. Do you want a discussion or?
Yeah, so I also got it, and particularly, I do sign up for these. And I thought maybe if you guys had something you want, questions you want to pose at the town hall on behalf of the city, I'd be happy to, given the opportunity, ask those questions.
So will you sit down?
So, sorry, there's three you can sign up, the 17th, 18th, or 20th, and I'll give, you can have my stuff.
Thank you.
So I think it's important for us to at least attend these. I generally attend them on behalf, well, not on behalf of Cat, but to keep my ears open as to what's going on. Ally often invites me, and I think she sends it out to everybody pretty much. But I think it's important for us to be at least listening to what's going on in these so we know what's going on. And she does pay attention to who is at these meetings, or her staff does, and lets her know who has and has not been showing up. So it's very noticeable when she has these and she has the elected official, when she does them in person, she has the elected official time beforehand. She knows, and it's embarrassing to me to see what cities are not showing up. I mean, we should be, not necessarily all three of these, but we definitely, when she has these, we should be attending.
I don't have any questions right off.
I have none.
Then that, I, I could, I can give you some correspondence too and might relate to what I've been doing. I have been listening to Vegas City's teleconference in Cordelette and, and reading all the emails and, and I got an email from Jennifer Pessell. And she's in charge of the Northwest Region, associated with the governor's office. And she put out an email last week talking about the reopening of our schools. And I, I thought because we're, even though we're a really small community, we, the school is a big part of our, our community. So I wrote her a letter, and I said that I'm very interested in what they're doing is they're forming a council to relate with the opening up of the schools. And so I wrote a letter saying that I was interested in being on that council. And that also, I'm a school bus driver, and so I kind of have that connection with the school. Because in the email, in the reopening of our schools... There's some major issues concerned with the social distancing in the classrooms and on the buses. So I thought I could have some valuable input on that. And she thanked me for the letter, and she sent it over to the governor's office, and I haven't heard a thing since. I do listen to what they have to say, and I'm going to try to catch one of these too, so...
So could I recommend that if we have questions, we direct them to the city administrator so she can be the point of contact for that?
That would be fine.
Or, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I just want to make sure that we're just having one point of contact at these meetings so that it doesn't look like we are disorganized or that we're not knowing what each other are doing.
What you mean, you lost me there, Susan, sorry. Are you talking about the committee, or are you talking about Susan?
The committee's your town hall.
Oh. So you're trying to ask the mayor not to ask questions? Is that the way I heard that, right? I'm sorry, it's hard to hear, or not.
No. No, I am asking for one point of contact. And I said, the city administrator or the mayor, whoever it is hoping to designate one person to be that point of contact.
Well, I totally okay with it. Joseph, you want to participate?
Whatever you guys want.
Yeah. It's fine with me.
There's nothing that prevents any of you from logging in and listening and being part of it.
Yeah, or even saying something.
Yeah, or even saying something, but if you have specific questions, I can take them.
Is there a specific agenda that will be, she'll be talking about that you can read ahead of time?
No, it's any question you want to pose to her, it's a town hall.
Okay.
So if it's, what are you doing about COVID based?
It probably should be something that's on the federal or, yeah. She not be able to deal with county issues.
Right.
She might deal with county issues as it relates to the federal assistance or something like that. But she's a representative congressman. Yep. Thank you. Okay. Items from the mayor, counselor, the city administrator.
Do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay. So I kind of have a short one and I'll take you to another question. And I thought of a couple of other things. I wasn't at work today for a medical thing, so I thought a few things out right tight this. So Rose Towne New Project is scheduled for its final inspection this Wednesday. We did a substantial completion walkthrough last Thursday. There are a few items on the bench list, really minimal. Fire extinguisher that we have, which was attached, some painting to do. Really, the architect was like, where do you put projects that go through where you have nothing to do at the end? So he's working up the substantial completion document, which allows them to ask for their last invoice of outstanding payment. And then they have 30 days to finalize all the items on the bench list, which all but one of them are already completed. And once those are satisfied, then they'll issue the final completion document. And then that gives them the right to request their retainage amount that we've been holding. And then we do have a one-year warranty. So if any outlet doesn't work, if something, we're going to, once we move the food bank and the seniors in, we check everything. If something's wrong, if the light starts flickering, they take care of it for the first 12 months. There's a Rose Towne New Garden planting party this Saturday from 8:00 to noon. Rachel Organ, who's part of the garden improvement projects, is spearheading this. The city did buy some Eco Lawn grass seed and then is working with Mean Nursery to get some drought tolerant plantings that the master gardeners of Rachel are going to plant. And then they already got a part that they got hold of for free delivered over there. So anyone has nothing to do on Saturday, go home and plant something. And the Small Cities allotment paving grant, we're in waiting game with weather to schedule it. We do have a little bidder, it has not been announced yet, but we do have one of the three bids with a little bidder. We're hoping that we can get some of it scheduled this month, but with the rain, everyone's gun shy to schedule any paving. But most likely it will start after July 1st. And that's for you, Matilla, Ripper, and Arkansas. And then we're working on developing, I believe July 31st is the next round of Small City allotment application paperwork, so we're working on that. We had street stormwater improvements. We just received the preliminary engineering design for the stormwater improvements that will take the West Port Electric, the Health Center, and Rose Avenue off of Bear Creek and send them to the Halum, which should solve some of the downtown over, over the back flooding during kind of flash floods and big water times. So staff reviewing those to make sure we understand everything the engineers proposing and then those go on to the agency to be approved in their design. And then depending, a lot of it is in the planter strip. So that's the other thing I'm going to be asking public works is, could we do it ourselves and save some money? Or, or do we not have the right equipment and we should put it out to bid? So that's a discussion we'll have to have in reviewing those documents. And then staff's currently collecting bids for the upcoming repair in the next fiscal year, which starts July 1st, for the resurfacing and repair of the play shed roof. We also took a little bit deeper look and are looking into whether or not there would be funding and what is allocated in the budget to take a couple of basketball hoops and move them to the less played areas the better before and actually get to move backwards and hoops because they are just beat the heck. And then we're also looking into a acid treatment of the concrete. It has just gotten so smooth over time, the kids will keep falling there. And as for an insurance risk, we're kind of perusing some different treatment options that would give them a little more grip for the safety of the kids that are employed in the area. And then we're looking to kind of put an inquiry out to committees. We kind of all got staying with the spiking COVID cases, but we're going to kind of ask committees if they do a control meeting, if they met like this, could they meet? And how many of them are interested in meeting? Not in probably, it will probably be the inquiry and intake will be July. So we may start August doing meetings if they're interested. But that's kind of on our plate to get in touch with people because I know a lot of people want to start talking about their projects and ideas. That's what I have. Just answer your questions.
Any update on the cemetery's, the cul-de-sac?
No, we're having a hard time getting concrete bids. Everybody's so booked out and that's really, Ben was going to double check with them as well if the call goes down to see where the cul-de-sac is at and when they're wanting to, you know, be done with it. But we really got to get that base in first. They did try two other entities and they were booked out till after September. So it's kind of, it's a lot of concrete to put in for. So if anyone knows any concrete, people, have them give me a call. We've tried some smaller firms and it's a big job or a one-man show. And then the bigger firms are like, well, that's nothing. And we're booked out, so we're kind of, so if you know anyone that does that, have them call City Hall and give me, talk to us about it.
Maybe two small ones combined.
I'm sure.
And, yeah.
So do we have the crack sealator on or, or we got to wait for?
No, because usually those are wired down to closet or some payments. We'll wait until July 1st.
Okay, so.
Or write about it where their invoice doesn't hit us.
Yeah, I was wondering if you were going to try that or not. We talked a little bit about maybe using it to seal the cracks around the lake. So, I mean, I want to entertain your thoughts on that. But definitely, and maybe we can get a little crack sealing party on Saturday or something.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we, if that's what, if council is okay with that, as long as we have the waivers signed and people, you know, kind of, typically it's a couple people running it and some other helpers doing other things that we can kind of trust. So if you're one of the workers of the machine and you know someone else that also could follow the directions and do it right, then I think we just sign waivers and please.
So you're going to drain the lake and seal it?
Yeah.
Jeez.
Put that, put that out and press notice button.
Lot of buckets.
Yeah, maybe what we do is, there are the training videos. So maybe whoever's going to be running it comes in and does a training video. That would also kind of secure us a little.
Yeah, I thought I was wondering if we could, I don't know, I mean, that's your purview. If you wanted to try to bring staff in, they switch the day or maybe we just, I can do it any day, so we can do all the training at the same time.
Yeah.
And we could use the lake as test area to start.
Practice, yeah.
All right, just, just.
Some public area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it not city property?
It is.
Okay, then what's the issue with having city staff?
No, he just means in the training, the volunteers and the city staff will all be on one day to train on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
So no one knows how to do it yet?
No, that's right.
And it's hot stuff, so we don't want any accidents.
We could streamline it to one event.
Yeah.
Maybe a rep comes or something too. Maybe I'll get that, okay?
Do we already purchase the?
No, it's in the July 1 election.
We got to give you a hearing. You have one, two. You have another question?
Yeah, then ordinance 923, did we get something for the paper?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I did.
At you, okay.
You did. Mm-hmm. It'll be going on the website on the, on Thursday as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
That way it goes the same day that it's in paper.
Oh, perfect.
All right. Any other questions for the city master? Okay, thank you, Joe. Any other discussion from the council?
I have something.
Okay.
At the city council meeting on June 1st, 2020, there were several things which I found disturbing, uncomfortable, and out of order. I am concerned about how we act, perform our duties, and how we comport ourselves and our roles as elected representatives. None of us are perfect and I made certain, I made mistakes as well. However, I believe that not addressing what has occurred is irresponsible and the behaviors exhibited cannot be allowed to continue. Most egregious of the events was the disrespectful and immature behavior of at least two of the counselors and the mayor. In light of the COVID-19 recommendations by health authorities, I was wearing a face covering. This was a public meeting in an enclosed building with limited air circulation. And I have several markers which tag me as at risk for complications from COVID-19. During the discussion of the open air market, I was making a comment. I realized the mayor couldn't hear me as he was leaning towards me and I saw, and I stopped and asked, I'm sorry, would you like me to speak louder? Mr. Allen commented, take the muzzle off. What was said to me was disrespectful and embarrassing. What was even more so was the laughter and mocking the public. I was shocked and appalled at being treated as I was. It was shameful for anyone to act like this, especially worse for elected officials to behave in such a manner in front of staff and members of the public. Later in the meeting, the mayor commented, quote, "I'm glad J.R. has his pants on tonight." He followed this up with, quote, "Did you have your telecon prints in your underwear?" And then, "Never mind." This type of comment has no place being made in a public meeting under any circumstance. Another example of elaborate professionalism occurred earlier in the meeting when the mayor insisted on inserting a defense of why he had done something during the process of what should have been a simple, straightforward approval of the minutes. It is not appropriate for discussion of an incident during a portion of the meeting where we are approving documents in their whole unless it is directly related to correcting the content of that document. This incident was during section nine consent agenda for approval, city council minutes of May 18th, 2020. When I raised my hand and tried to call for point of order, the mayor should not have told me that quote-unquote "on talking" and should not have looked forward with his explanation rather than accepting my statement that this was the time for only approval of the minutes, not discussion or explanation. It is also inappropriate for the mayor to leave this one-sided commentary into the record, making statements about staff and departments doing or not doing things without them having the opportunity to respond, explain, or clarify. I am formally requesting that our council receive additional training as to appropriate conduct and behavior of city council members as well as committing to reading and following our council rules as have been standing and as amended. I have repeatedly asked that our current counselors and mayor attend or observe readings of other communities to see examples of how they conduct their business as councils and commissions. In addition, I believe the counselors involved in these incidents and our mayor owe the public apology for the behavior at the meeting on Monday, June 1st, 2020. Respectfully submitted, Susan Wagner, city counselor, city administrator. And I will provide you this copy.
I don't need a copy of that, I can't hear.
Of course, I'm happy to. I'll get copies for everyone before everyone leaves tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So we're on counselor reports? You know, the ad hoc pickleball group in town kind of appropriated the skate park concrete area in the meantime beforehand. So we've been successfully been playing down there. It's turned out before to get a little asset for everybody, backed up the administrators playing. I did go down and look at the basketball court, the cover area, and that is very slick in there. That would have been a concern if I tried to play pickleball in there. We'd have been behind us more on our feet, so. The lake, managed to top the lake off. I got a level of 10 inches that I shoot for. And I'm done pumping currently because algae in the river gets so bad that it starts flooding the stream, but we've learned over time, takes about 20 days and that goes away. So anyhow, but we're losing, well, we were losing at a pretty fast rate, but with this rain, I think we're maybe holding even here, so.
Did you say you picked a level that was reasonable?
10 inch. There's actually, I installed a staff gauge down here where the water dumps into the lake. It's on a T-post metal rule. And it kind of runs backwards because I used to do off the concrete slip, I measure off from the top of the slip to the water. And so it's like a negative number. Then it gives it a smaller, it's a bigger number, so it's, eh. I've got parts, I've got a whole that's all spreading, so. But that's where we're at on that. Lake's getting a lot of algae growth going, so it's pretty murky right now. Other than that, we'll have our crack sealing party down there to make it look easier. Staff's been doing a great job down there at the lake keeping it moving. Been getting all the good attention, so it shows.
What caused that lake to get all blue one year? Was that algae bloomed?
Probably, it's kind of a greenish, weirdish blue for. I know, it got a little muddy one year and we think it was a catfish spawn, but. And then I caught some fish the other day and I actually got to go fishing. And they're rainbows, but they got cuts underneath the hill. I, that first one I caught, I was like, oh, that's weird. Didn't pay attention, then I caught one just happened to did it. And then I, I texted the assistant bot. He says, you catch another one, I want a picture. He says, there are cases of hybridization, but he, he was like, I don't know, that would be occurring in that lake, you know.
What do you call it?
Crossbreeding. Yeah, a hybridization between a cut and a rainbow. I. I was looking fishing.
Still ain't giving it, isn't it?
It did.
Okay, any other discussion before I close the public meeting?
Will you, when you recess, will you state the time and give me a second to switch?
Okay, we got it.
I'd like to take a five-minute break between the executive session, so. With that said, I'd like to recess from the public forum at 8:50 p.m. And return. We'll end the executive session at 9:08. And return to regular session at 9:08. We'll end the executive session at 9:08, and return to regular session at 9:08.
Ashman, you want to?
Yep.
Okay. So, I have a couple things on here. I have that staff is going to bring back the draft rules. They adopted draft rules with an amendment outlining clarification and requirements for doc priority language. Staff's going to bring back here, first meeting in August, the list of remaining work session topics, and they have a work session next Monday at 6:00 PM, then they provide the forums for, the two different forums, and then the article, that helps everyone.
Are you assigning for the docs? Is there an action either to that, or are we? The doc?
You guys already did that in the motion?
Oh, we did do that in the, okay. You're just implementing this?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're just hoping that to happen, it wasn't a coming back to you thing.
Okay, Al, during the regular council meeting at 9:10 PM, meeting adjourned.